We have a...
You have one then?
Yeah, right there.
We have a Doral? We have a Doral? Okay. We have a Brian.
All right, well, you have one back there though? Okay. There's an extra one. Sherry will probably say something. Okay. We'll get started then. Welcome, everybody. Uh, welcome remotely, Brian and Wayne. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. All right, good, because Wayne's got something to present, so I want to make sure he can hear me. Item number one. Uh, proposed ordinance amending city code 10-4-2 adding certificates of non-compliance. Wayne?
He wasn't feeling well.
Oh.
So he is at home, but if he was needed, he said he'd pipe in.
Oh, okay, are you, are you, you're making the presentation. I'm sorry, Jody.
On your desk, you'll see kind of just a synopsis of why we're wanting to make the change to the code. The planning commission. You should see it there, uh, on the top. I think of your papers, write by your name.
10.4.2.
Yes, 10.4.2. Um, the planning commission held a public hearing. Uh, no one attended the public hearing, actually. This would allow the city, this ordinance would allow the city, uh, to be able to, should you, we choose to, file something on a person's property with the county recorder's office if they are non-compliant, meaning if they got a building permit without, or they did construction on their property without approval, or, uh, made other improvements that did not get authorized by the city or inspected.
So it's only non-compliance as it relates to, um, actual building, nothing else?
Yeah, no, it would be enforcement too.
From all, from everything, okay. The way you put it there, I, cause I was thinking it was for everything, but the way you put it was just non-per- non-permental. And I was like, well, we've got other things too, so I just wanted to make sure that I understood it right. I did.
All right, thanks, Jody. And, and, uh, it, it does sound like this is modeled after what other cities are doing too, so.
That's my understanding.
If it's good for other cities, how could it be bad for us?
And at the public hearing, uh, it was noticed properly within, uh, on the state website, our city website. It was sent to the Pace and Chronicle and, uh, no one showed up, so no comments were heard.
Okay, thanks, Jody. Anybody have any questions for Jody or, or Wayne if need be?
No, I, I suggested...
Yeah. I think it fits in well with...
It's not something you go and do immediately. It's only after you work with them and work them and work them and work them, then you can record it.
Yeah. No, I agree, and it, it, it gives another meaningful enforcement tool, I think. Okay, then we'll move on to item two. Uh, proposed ordinance amending city code 9-2-B-2-F. Back to you, Jody.
Uh, again, this was something, uh, that Wayne found as he was reviewing our code. Uh, the current language talks about a 2002 water impact fee study that was done by LEI. So it's an out-of-date code that we have reference in there, that we have to a code. So the proposed language, um, would be a review of past water impact fee studies finds that the results are reasonable and defensible mythology and analysis for the termination of the impact of the new development impacting the water system needs and cost of improvements in the city. It doesn't give a date, it doesn't reference a particular report. Instead, it leaves it open so that when we do, uh, additional reports, we don't have to go back and change the code.
I think that last line is important, you know, as adopted, as they occur, are adopted as they occur. That keeps it up to date on whatever we're doing.
Yeah.
And is there other regulations, maybe the TED question, but is there other regulations that require this type of study to be done at certain intervals?
Well, it's certainly not a me question, so I'll say it's a TED question.
Yes, so there are, um, whenever you do a, increase your water, uh, rate, you have to do an impact fee.
So same as all other impact fees?
Yeah. Um, it's recommended you do them every five years either way, but, um, but anytime you're going to propose to raise your rate, you have, you have to do an impact fee study. Depending on your population determines the level of study you have to do.
Thanks. Wayne, did you have something to add?
No.
And I'm sorry, you're not feeling well. Hope you're feeling better.
Well, thank you, me too.
Okay. If, if there are no other comments or questions, we'll move on to item three. So I'm a little surprised that no one from Three Bridges is present, but I, I suppose that it's not really necessary. Uh, I mean, it's, it's just about advancing, um, with those points that were made at the last meeting. So, I don't know if anybody has anything else to add?
Now, we don't have to actually adopt this as is, we can make adjustments, right?
Well, I, I mean, the nature of the motion, uh, it seems to me is going to be something that, I, I, I mean, I've thought about how it might be crafted even, and, and there are probably dozens of ways it could be crafted, and so I, you know, but I do think that what Three Bridges is looking for is at least some commitment from the city that, you know, based on high-level sorts of assessments of, of these five points, you know, we're on board or, or, or we're not. And so are you thinking like, uh, something...
Well, I'm thinking number two, right? Per our conversation last time, this says current situation, salt shed, uh, could use a rebuild. Find proposed change, Woodland Hills could secure new land for a new salt shed, and Three Bridges could pay market value for the current shed. For me, I'm not interested in number two at all, if there's a dollar expenditure at all for the city.
Okay, e- ex, let me just clarify possibly, I mean, what if there are improvements that are beyond what our current salt shed offers? I mean, I, I, I don't know, I mean, and, and maybe we could ask Three Bridges, just for the inconvenience of moving it, we could say, well, we, we want some additional, uh, I don't know, I mean, something a little beyond market value that will give us maybe some bays or, you know, some other, uh...
I, I think those are, are great. I see those as more on the want category than the need category, and thus this is an inconvenience. So it's like, from, you know, kind of a negotiation standpoint, I'd look at this as, well, how bad do you want it?
Well, and I think what they're looking for is not so much, uh, is it a yea or nay? It's more of, should we continue to look at this and see if it makes sense for market value to, to replace what you've got? Not that, okay, if we don't get, if we're just getting market value, but it doesn't replace what we've got, then we're, we're, it's a done deal. That can still happen. I think at this point, what they're looking for is, do we even move forward?
Yeah.
At looking at this, or you just can say no to the salt shed idea, and we don't even spend the money to hire someone to figure out what the valuation is and all that. So I, I don't know that I'd get too much into the weeds, like the mayor said, right now, but it's more of, do we even continue forward to find out if this is a deal or not?
But I do think that that is probably one that, I mean, cause I don't want to commit us to, like, yeah, we'll take market value for this. So I, I, I think that we explore it.
Yeah, I would say you can take market value out. Just say, continue to explore the salt shed exchange or something like that, rather than even...
And for me, I'd like to just say, hey, do you, if you guys want to do that study, if you're really interested in the salt shed, here's kind of where we're sitting right now, you know, and I don't know where, you know, my fellow council members sit on this, but I would hate for them to think that we say these would be potentially acceptable terms, when I personally would not vote yes on these terms.
On which piece of it then?
It's so vague, I, I'm just hoping that they would know, okay, for us to be able to acquire potentially the salt shed, what the city is looking for is potentially at least a relocation, a rebuild, property acquisition, without the, the, the city expending any funds.
Yeah.
Now, if there's improvements...
Yeah, we're not approving their changes, but what we, what you're saying is that...
I'm saying, why not give them potentially what we would be looking for?
Instead of what their proposed...
So that they can then decide whether they want to investigate it or not? Because I don't feel this is a fair representation, at least of my expectation, for them to continue down the path.
Yeah, no, I, I think that would be good to make that clear.
I agree too, because sometimes, you know, they say our, our current situation, which may or may not be what we feel our current situation is, and their proposed change may or not, may not be what our proposed change is. And I think that as, as we've heard from residents since last, um, uh, last council meeting, I think they're open to some of this, but they don't want us using our money to do it, to benefit them.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, and that's what number two says, Woodland Hills would secure a new thing. Now, we're not holding them to that wordage, but I think it needs to be on the public record for both them and for our residents that we're, this isn't, we're not accepting the proposed changes that they're asking for. We're letting them then explore what they would want to propose to us, and that we may or may not approve that. And I think what Ben was saying is, um, when it says Woodland Hills would secure the new land and do this, they'd pay market value, most of us would say no, because that is a, um, that's an expense to the city that right now we don't have. And, um, you know, there's some other things, you know, and the same with some of the other things. There might be wordage in there, and we don't want to be held to that wordage just because we said, yeah, go ahead, show us a proposal. That doesn't mean that we agree to that wordage.
I, I agree.
That's what I mean. We're approving to go forward with them giving us a proposal, but not necessarily that we would or would not accept said proposal, so...
Yeah, no, I, 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 I see your point, and I agree with you. I, I, I guess what I would like to do is at least offer some commitment. I mean, a commitment that, I, I mean, and I'm not, again, I'm not exactly sure what that commitment would be. Maybe a commitment that we are willing to relocate the salt shed if the conditions are right, or, you know, something along those lines. I mean, I, I, so I mean, that way, we're not committing to a price or even a, a structure for how much we would get paid for it, but it's not a deal breaker moving the salt shed.
Yeah.
I just, I just want us to be careful that this doesn't become our Davis Ranch. That someday, some future city council doesn't say, that darn city council, they should have approved that. We lost out on this land, we lost out on this revenue, we lost out on this opportunity because it was such an emotional issue. And I understand that it's an emotional issue, but we also have to look at the future of Woodland Hills and the potential income. And it's going to happen, one way or another, we can't stop the development.
Yeah.
So either we do some things that benefit our community and possibly get a little bit of revenue, or we don't. And if we don't, and we lose it, and he takes that piece of land and puts that into Salem somehow, and we lose out on that, then this becomes our future Davis Ranch.
A little bit, but we also have to be concerned that, and cautious, that we don't want it to go down some of the headaches we had with Summit Creek of, oh, you said this, but there's nothing in writing, or you, you promised us this and that, and we don't want to go down that road either, um, just because we've agreed to look at something. And so I think it just needs to be clear that this is, we're okay looking at future proposals, um, but this isn't, this isn't the deal, right? And just like Summit Creek thought that, yes, we're going to have gates, and it may have been, one of these, we'll look at your proposal for a gate, but we never approved it, right? And so it turned into a headache later, many years down the road, and I don't want this to turn into that because we love how Summit Creek is now, but we have had to make some accommodations for that. And we want to make sure that this time, we're kind of on front of that, and making sure that our communication is very clear, in, in anything that we go forward with, with both the residents and the developers, so it's fair on both sides.
Yeah, no, and I, to that end, I would just say, let's be clear in whatever is adopted, whatever motions are made, what we vote on.
Yeah, you can make the motion and make it as clear as you want to.
Yeah. And, and Three Bridges isn't, I mean, I, I, again, I would have liked to have seen them here, because then we could know exactly what they would require from this, and, and so...
I did talk to them a couple of days ago, they called Trey and Julie, not Larry, but Trey and Julie. Mentioned this was going to happen tonight, um, gave them the option to be here, and I, I really think what they're looking for is not even the weeds right now. Um, whether the deal goes forward or not is yet to be determined, but I think what they're looking for is, do we spend the, the time and effort to do valuations, to figure out if this makes sense, to look at other properties, to, you know, determine even if it makes sense for them?
Yeah.
I think what they're looking for is, yes, the city is willing to entertain this, not be locked into these terms, but we're willing to continue, continue to entertain this, um, with the right conditions or right proposals. But I don't think they're looking to get in the weeds, they're just looking, are you willing to entertain if we come back with the right proposals?
I think that's fair.
So that's why I don't know that I'd get too far into the weeds of what we're going to be requesting yet, because we don't know what they're asking, so we don't know what to request yet. So I would, I would just be very high level, and are we willing to continue to entertain these ideas?
And I think that it just made sure that it's clear for our residents and for them, that this is very high level, and we're not committed just because it's written on this paper.
Yeah.
The other thing I think we should really look into on that transient tax share, um, to make sure that's even a legal thing to do, because it may or may not be, and we don't want to us approve doing something that may not even be possible at all.
Right.
And I, I was going to check on that, and I totally forgot about it, so, um, but just, just to show that, you know, again, on the record, that we do have concerns with it, that we're okay going forward, looking for a proposal.
Okay. Well, I, and I, I think that's probably, I think that should be acceptable to them. I, I would assume, it sounds like what you said, Ted, it, it would be in line with kind of their expectations, so...
Yeah, yeah, whether these deals happen or not, I don't, I don't think they're ready to determine that yet. And I don't know that they're even ready to hear conditions on the deals yet, because they don't know what the deal is.
Yeah.
They're just saying, do we spend the time to propose something?
Yeah. Or is it just running into a wall?
Or are we just going to be running against, because it takes them a lot of money to do this, and, you know, are they willing to, is it worth going forward with the proposal? And then they'll come back and propose stuff, and then say, well, these are the conditions we want, or this is what we want, or, anyway. That's kind of what their feedback was in the call.
And, but I, I'm, I'm glad that it was brought up, that we don't inadvertently, through a council meeting, commit ourselves to terms. So I'm, I'm glad that that did get brought up, so, thank you. All right. Did, did anybody?
Brian, want to comment?
No, I think you guys have covered it. Um, I, in my mind, nothing is a, you know, is a brick wall, that, that's where, I'm willing to listen to proposals. Um, and I think it sounds like most of y'all are as well, willing to just hear what they have to say and hear what they propose, and then move forward from there with negotiations, um, with making sure that nothing is binding at this point.
Okay, thanks, Brian. All right. We might be out of here in 10 minutes. Okay, uh, item four, um, SESD and MAG and COG. I did have something, there's nothing on SESD.
Did we get our donation from?
Oh.
Oh! Well, welcome, I, so Hugo was supposed to come.
Yeah, I was expecting to see Hugo, but maybe if he had my free issue, I couldn't figure out which floor to come in.
But we didn't get him on the agenda, so, uh, uh, cause I asked him to text me back yesterday, and, and we never heard back from him, and so we weren't able to put it on our agenda, so I'm sorry you came all this way and, and... Okay, well, thank you for, uh, for coming, uh... We were looking at the 10th as the, the next... Yeah, and, and so, but he, but Hugo mentioned that he, he needed to make sure he had his schedule sorted out, so, um, so...
What, what are they going to do, a proposal on something?
Well, no, so Hugo Thompson, he, uh, attended a leadership, uh...
Oh, yes, you, you told me, I remember, you know, yeah.
And then we were going to use it also as an opportunity to, um...
Present the check?
No, no, that was something, uh, they've already, they've allocated the money, but, uh, they didn't give me the check yet. But no, it would just be more, uh, Dan Ellsworth from SESD was going to come and, and was just going to kind of do a meet and greet, if anybody had any questions about SESD's...
promote their camp, which is awesome.
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry, uh, we, we seem to have gotten the wires crossed, but, uh, thank you for coming all the same. Okay, yeah, and, and, and we'll, we'll stay, uh, trying to get it locked in, so...
Say, will you send them, yeah, send them a text? We'll send you something, let you know when he's...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, but are you, are you coming instead of Dan then, with that?
No, he invited me to come.
Oh, really, okay. Okay. And you came to our board meeting, I know, and, uh, so, well, it's nice to see you again. Thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, well, so I guess my SESD report is that, uh, we need to improve our communication skills.
You're okay.
Move that to the 10th, okay.
But I'm not going to take the fall for that, I, I, I did, uh, I did try to skip it. Yeah, Jody is my witness. All right. Uh, then let's move on to, uh...
I was just going to tell you, Doral responded and said that his wife had eye surgery today.
Oh, okay.
So he's helping.
All right, well, thank you, and, uh, certainly wish her our best. Oh, hey, oh, wow!
If you guys were like 10 minutes later, you would have missed everything.
Yeah, we are actually about to, uh, wrap up. Yeah.
Uh, can we add something to the agenda, something really long?
Yeah.
I know, I already yelled at him out the window.
Is that your grandbaby?
Yeah, that's my, our first grand, uh, child, our granddaughter and, uh...
I bet you don't like her at all.
Yeah, no, we're, we're thrilled to have her, uh, I, I just wish we had a little more space to have her crawl around, because we're all confined to our basement dungeon.
Her first city council meeting.
I know.
I should take a picture. You should take a selfie with her, so that you can see she's here.
All right, well, uh, we were just about to hear from Ben.
Um, I, our board meetings, uh, in a couple of weeks, so nothing to report there.
Okay. Moving right along. Brian?
So I apologize, I'm down here on my houseboat and forgot my notebook, so I can't remember if I presented, uh, Mount Nebo water at our last, at the last time or, or not, so I've got nothing to report until I get my notebook.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kinniston is excused. Councilmember Lund?
Okay, so, um, just Woodland Hills days, um, I'm working on getting the newsletter, making some flyers. Um, all, uh, city council members, fire chiefs, EMT people, we have to be in the parade, don't forget that. Fireman's breakfast, don't forget that, and we're all expected to be at breakfast at Woodland Hills days. People like to see us there, so I hope everyone can be there. Um, there's a whole bunch of extra things this year, so it'll be lots of fun. Um, we have, Friday night, we have from 5:00 to 8:00, a car show, from 5:00 to 9:00, an art show, from 6:00 to 7:30, J-Dog's Dinner, from 6:00 to 8:00, the Rebels Band will be playing, and at 8:30-ish, we're going to have a movie night. And then Saturday morning, we have a fun run, 8:15, Fireman's Breakfast at the city center, so here. 9:15, Flag Ceremony, Fire Department isn't doing that, somebody else is. Um, 10 o'clock, Parade at the Park, 11, Children's Games, um, 11 a.m. to 9 p.m., the art show again. 11:30 Bingo, and then there's during the, uh, 9 to 1, there's games, vendors, climbing wall, all of the above. So should be really fun. Um, my chairpeople...
Ian's at 1, other than the art show is going later. Okay.
And it'll all be posted, I've just kind of started putting it all together today, so to get it all posted, but it'll be good. Um, it's going to be lots of fun, we just need, you know, we need to make sure we're all there to support. That would be awesome. Um, you're going to see some signs for the art show, they're going to stick them by our banners, don't pull them. I, I told them they could put them there, so don't pull them when you see them. Anyway.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Malkovich?
We meet in a few weeks, so no report.
All right. Uh, items for upcoming city council meetings. We're going to have the report, uh, the SESD report, as we mentioned, if anybody has anything else. Oh, yeah, Jody?
Should we take a 30-minute break, just to...
It's, it's what?
Should we take a 30-minute break?
No, no break, no break today.
Yeah, no, I think we can roll right into the actual council meeting.
As long as Jody's doesn't take a long time, no break.
Mine don't take long, we are having it on September 10th. Oh, yeah. It's for a rate increase for our garbage and recycling rates. It also will include a fee for a temporary building permit. Right now, we do not allow, uh, people to begin excavating or doing any work on their property until such time as they have a complete building permit packet. And this would allow them to start doing a little work as long as a deposit, a hefty deposit is paid, and a permit fee is, you know, paid, so...
That helps, huh?
Got my endorsement.
Great.
Then the other thing is, it was brought to my attention earlier this week, that our city code 1-6-B dot 4 has some wording in it that requires that our city name, 80 minutes, be distributed within 15 days and approved by the city council at the very next city council meeting. I looked at state statute, um, and state statute is entirely different. Um, so I would suggest that we adopt state statute and not...
Oh, definitely.
Go by...
Pretty sure we...
Yep, but I'm glad it was brought to my attention, I had totally forgotten about it, it was done in 2012. I didn't realize it was still in the code, so, um, we want to make sure we're doing things per our, our code, and so this would be a way to clean that up.
Oh, it is good, the state statutes change, and we have to update them sometimes, so...
Yeah, we don't want any conflicts.
So for following state statute, that's what they teach at all of my conferences and training, is they go over state statutes, so... It's kind of one of those things where you keep that in mind and you forget about the other, so...
Okay, so this will be for vote?
For vote at the next, at the September 10th city council meeting.
Perfect.
Thanks, Jody.
And there's a draft ordinance there, along with all the wording.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. All right, well...
Well, and state statute does supersede our, our city's code, um, on these types of things. And so if there is a problem right now, we can revert back to that until we get it exchanged.
Yeah, no, and, and I, I, I think that it's, the, the conflicts are sometimes where we do end up in trouble too, so it's just way better to...
Well, it's good when it comes to our attention to clean it up, I think.
Yep.
Yep, for sure. Okay, uh, then let's just go right, let's call the city council meeting to order, and we'll end the work session and, uh, and, and begin the actual city council, um, meeting. So Councilmember Malkovich, will you offer an invocation, and Councilmember Lund, will you lead us in the pledge?
I was almost thinking of saying hallelujah, but I was...
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve the citizens of Woodland Hills and to meet together as a city council. We're grateful for the beautiful mountain that we live on, and for the safety that thou provides for us. We're grateful for our city staff who runs our city efficiently and effectively. We're grateful for our residents who contribute and help in so many ways, in volunteering and helping their neighbors and helping us. Please bless us this night as we deliberate and contemplate action, um, for our city, that we can do so in mindful and thoughtful, um, ways. We're grateful again for all that we have, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, uh, now we will open up the public comment portion of our meeting. Sherry, you've got something, come on up.
Let's have the baby talk too, look at, she wants to.
Yeah, she'll, she'll talk.
Baby talk is the best.
I'm Sherry Berger. And this question has to do with the salt shed, or my comment. When Three Bridges is proposing market value, is that for the land where the shed is now? And where would it be moved to? Does the city already have land, or would they be purchasing land? And if they have to purchase land, that I think should be included in the agreement with Three Bridges, particularly if the land we're going to purchase is more expensive than where the salt shed is now. And possibly, I think it's a good idea to look at what the cost would be of what we would like, so that associating with Three Bridges, we can say, well, like Mayor said, we want this and that, or two-story, or whatever, and roughly what that cost would be, so I think city needs to do a little homework on what they want to, not just what Three Bridges is going to propose.
Good suggestion, and, and that is something that we, I agree, we need to be mindful of, and I think to Ben's point, that, that at a minimum, it's a zero cost, you know, if, if it's a land purchased that is bought with funds that are realized from selling the salt shed property, that we're able to buy what we need with that, and if not, then they need to kick in whatever beyond that would be required. Okay, thanks, Sherry. All right, um, any other comment?
Mark, is, is that Mark O'Line, or is that another one?
That's my assumption, but.
And then Diana.
Yeah. Okay.
I can't find where to raise my hand.
Okay, well, the, just, the speaker, Diana?
Okay.
Go ahead.
This is Diana Sackett. Uh, thank you, Sherry, I have tons of thoughts, and I won't keep you all for three hours, because I don't have three hours. So I'm just going to address water, and if you read the briefing that is put out by the citizen portal of, um, all public meetings are accessible through this portal, if you just read that, not knowing any, anything about Three Bridges development, having nothing to do with that, and you just focus on what's in this briefing, and you look at the water conversation about water. It's a real strong, it's very evidential of the scarcity of water, and the thought that we might consider releasing any control of what water we have right now is a disservice to every one of our tomorrows. And I hope that we will consider more carefully what we're getting in return. I don't feel like I've heard a single thing from the developer that makes me think I'm getting something, when you're a really good salesman, and you, we have all heard some really great sales pitches from the developer. You leave your audience believing they're the winners. And he's so good at it, and he has done that, and I worry that we are looking emotionally rather than at the data. Is, are any of these things, and each one should be considered very individually, but it is as, in doing so, are any of them of value that we actually have a need for? We all, everybody wants a bigger, nicer house or car, but is there a need? You have to assess each, you know, from every direction, I just ask that we slow down and maybe ask for more public comment? Maybe even further? I don't know if this constitutes having a vote. There are a lot of pieces in the mix. I don't think it does, but I think we need more more of our citizens connecting to all of the issues.
Yeah, we're not approving anything, we're just saying that we're willing to discuss it with them.
I 100% do understand what was voted, yes, and I agree with that. We're willing to discuss, but when it's time to agree, we will have already made up determination, each one of us. If we know details, and that's all I'm asking, is that we really consider each piece separately. Um, side note, one more thing. If you look at, I know he offered funds from the hotel, it wouldn't be a tax, because we're not entitled to tax revenue as Salem City would be. But he offered a something, a token money gift from all rentals of the hotel's base, and I, it was a quick look up, I think it's 0.32% tax amount that Salem City gets, and he was clear that it would not be equal to that or near it. I don't think we should be wagering gifting on our end, when it's, we're talking at a couple hundred dollars a year. We have to know the facts rather than emotionally, yay, he's giving us a gift. That's, that's all I really want us to know. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Diana. All right, um, any other public? Okay, then we will close the public comment portion and move on to items 10 and 11, the consent agenda. We could get a motion regarding the minutes.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda for minutes of July 16th, as well as minutes for August 13th.
Okay.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Hilliard, seconded by Councilmember Malkovich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Um, item 12, ordinance 2024-22, amending city code 1042 to add certificates of non-compliance.
I'll move.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Malkovich. Seconded by Councilmember Lunt, Councilmember Malkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Item 13, ordinance 2024-23, amending city code 92B2F.
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Councilmember Lunt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Malkovich. Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Um, there is no update, uh, legally from where we discussed last time, so unless somebody else has some other reason to request a closed session, I see no need to. You're thinking about something.
But what time is it?
Are we having a miracle?
Yeah, I know.
Is this a miracle?
This is something, this is really-
Sort of weird.
Okay, well, then-
It's the baby, the baby has brought us a miracle.
She has.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Councilmember Hilliard. No second?
Second, second, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Malkovich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Okay, thanks, everybody online.